I would like to thank the citizens of the United States of America and to the Republican Party for saying, "One nation, united in the universal liberty of the people."
Hello, Paul. I'm Alan.
Yes.
Lawhead?
Yes.
Mink?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
Motion to open the meeting along with servicing of the public meeting notice?
So moved.
I'll say it. Motion by Alan, second by Lawhead to open the meeting. Councilman Alan?
Yes.
Lawhead?
Yes.
Mink?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
Consideration of petitions and other communications? There are none at this time, all the public? There are none? So at this time, I'd like to recognize some citizens here on their behalf. Robin and Becca Dahl with the Public School System. Doug and Julian DeShager. And Doug and Doll Stevens and Joy Stevens with the Historic System. Right. So I want to amend the agenda. I want to put Mrs. Ostmeier and Mrs. Dahl on for the, uh, proper homecoming parade.
I'm Becca Dahl, and I'm here with Robin Ostmeier. And we're here, I should be on his phone. We're here. I'm used to just teaching, walking around. Sorry. We're actually here on behalf of the community club. And we would like to ask permission to close the street for our homecoming parade. We got good news today. They've actually postponed the parade a couple of weeks from the 7th.
Could I, I need, I need to have a vote here. I need to adopt the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have now messed up twice. You can put that in a minute.
Motion to adopt the agenda. Amend the agenda, please.
I'll make it.
Is there a second?
I'll say it.
Motion by Lawhead, second by Mink to amend the agenda. Councilman Lawhead?
Yes.
Mink?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
Okay, you can see.
I think I might let her go. Anyway, we're here to ask permission to close the streets for our homecoming parade. We got good news today. It's not going to be on the 7th of September. Thank goodness, it's going to now be on the 28th, which is still early. Uh, we would like permission to close the streets from 12 to 3:30 in the afternoon on that Friday. And also ask permission for you to help us to closing the streets. Either whoever our police officer is for the day. I have distributed a map. This is one we've been using for the past. And it starts over here on 2nd and Iowa, and it's on 121.
Big area up there, right?
Mm-hmm.
Anything different than previous years?
No.
I was making, is this a motion?
Yeah.
I made the motion to approve the homecoming parade route. That's your purpose?
Motion by Alan, or motion by, yeah. Motion by Alan, second by Lawhead to approve the homecoming parade route. Same as last year or the previous years. Councilman Mink?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Lawhead?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry to delay your procedures.
Okay, reading approval or amend, amend it from the last meeting? That would be the one meeting where those, please? This would be the monthly meeting of the 11th and the special meeting assessment meeting on the 25th. If I could have a motion to approve those, please?
So moved.
Second?
Motion by Hillman, second by Alan to approve July 11th and July 25th meetings, minute meetings. Councilman Hillman?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Lawhead?
Yes.
Mink?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
Reports. Treasure report?
If you look in your packet, you'll see the treasures report for this month. You'll see this is one of our more expensive, July is one of the more expensive months of the year for the city. Our income was a little over seventy-three thousand, seventy-three thousand, two hundred, seventy-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. The total expense was one hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Again, this is one of the few months of the year when our net income is less than our expenses. And again, if you look at the other following pages, there's additional detail as well. And our bank account balance for the month is three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, one hundred and twelve and fifty-one cents. I'll go on to the administrators' report. This month... This month, um, in August, we always like to start to tee up the budget discussion. We wanted to kind of, we always like to look backwards as we prepare to look forward. So we wanted to give kind of a year in review. Um, we wanted to start with just looking at the events that we've had in the last year. With the exception of a few of the training... With an exception of a few of the training activities, all of the events that we're about to go through were actually revenue and income generating events for the city. None of them cost the city any money. Most of them just generated income. In the last two years, starting at the end of 2015, beginning of 2016, the council adopted five strategic areas of concentration for the city. And those areas were parks and recreation, revenue and job creation, and business model improvements, infrastructure and land use planning, generational continuity, emergency management and response. City-sponsored events usually fit into one of our strategic priorities. The language for these priorities was taken from the SWOT analysis process that involved working with the committees of the city. It also involved looking at city ordinances and state statutes. And today, either a department head or a city committee or both is assigned responsibility for each strategic priority. And then ultimate oversight belongs to the city council. And then our comprehensive planning committee focuses on the detailed planning for each area of concentration. So, um, I wanted to make sure that you had these in front of you because in two weeks when we come back and talk about budget, we're really going to focus a lot on these five priorities. One of our first events of the fiscal year was the Dooling Pianos event. It was principally a fundraising event for the pool renovation fund. But although raising of funds was the important objective, the planning subcommittee also had another goal. And they wanted very much to try to bring the community together to experience the positive feeling of just being a community. And in many ways, I think that was one of the finest accomplishments of the evening. It was a great way for us to thank Councilman Keeler for all of his hard work and service to the community. And as you can see, there was quite a, quite a turnout and quite a, quite a joyous ruckus, I think, at that event. I think it started off well. Another important event of the year has been the building of the softball concession stand. The city contributed nineteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars to the building materials of the concession stand. The labor and additional materials were provided by the softball and Little League baseball associations. The city also had been committed another five thousand dollar grant that the council signed over for the purposes of building the concession stand. The North Park Committee also assisted with the repairing part of the fence and spraying for weeds and included the fields as part of the citywide cleanup. And the schools graciously and the community club graciously came out as well and helped with that. And the community club also donated, can't forget them. They also donated five thousand dollars towards the building of the concession stand. And so it's, it's kind of, I think, the hope of all of the parties involved that these efforts will start to heal some of the rifts that came into being early on in the process. But that all these efforts can help start to heal, start that healing process. And one of the less attractive or exciting things that we do, but probably one of the most important things that we do are our training efforts. It's less glamorous, but it's really important. And we work hard to ensure that our staff and our community volunteers and members receive the best training that we can offer. Through grants and cooperative agreements, we're able to provide our community with unique educational opportunities. And this provides us with better grant opportunities, more professional staff. And we also save money by being able to perform tasks here directly rather than outsourcing those staff, those tasks to consultants and other people who would charge us more money. We are the Heartland Juvenile Justice Institute. We attend those conferences on a yearly basis. And that allows us to have certifications to work with juveniles that I don't think anybody else in our county and maybe even our region have. Clerk books, we provided several trainings, not just with our staff, but also with the council. And we invited the entire community to come in and learn the accounting software that we, that we utilize here within our, within our offices. The League of Municipalities also provides a lot of training. We get brochures from them that the council gets to use as fans and doorstops. But, but they are actually very helpful and provide us with calendaring and deadlines. In addition, we also opened up the auditorium and provide it for emergency response trainings. We do planning and zoning trainings, things that I can see you all already yawning, but they're very important and they provide us with a level of skill that, that is very unique in our area. Also, we do local staff trainings once a week. We meet together as staff and do training and collaboration to try to stay on top of our skill sets. This year, the city began providing recreational classes for the first time. They were a bit of an experiment. These classes helped them to offset the city costs associated with running the auditorium. But they also provided earning and learning opportunities to the community. The average class size was six point six people attending each class. There were a total of eighty-six people that attended thirteen classes total. And we feel like it was a real success. And this fall and winter, we planned with council approval to pick back up with the exercise and dance classes. Both of our current instructors have said they would like to come back. And we are also working with People's Grocery to add a cooking option. So any of you who are interested, and maybe we can even rainbow Doug in and get him involved. But this seemed to be really successful. And since the auditorium is here anyway, it didn't cost us anything extra. The youth program, you've heard a lot about the youth program. Last week, the program received back the first full copy of their literary magazine. And they began proofreading it. And that was extremely exciting for a lot of our kids for the first time to be authors of their own book. But in addition to that, they've also been able to produce a lot of exciting activities. They worked this summer on a one-ax kit that they've kind of delayed. They're going to complete that during Christmas break. But they had a lot of fun with it, maybe a little too much fun. They've been able to do several service projects. They helped down at the baseball field doing some painting. They've helped out some of the senior members of our community. This spring, they went to Omaha to see the play Wicked and visit the Jocelyn Art Museum. But of everything that they do, I think the most important thing is that every participant has at least one true friend. And that's kind of their, their big theme now. They come in every day and we say, "How many friends does a person need?" And they all hold up one finger. And that's, that's kind of their new thing. And the neat thing about this program, again, is that it's entirely grant and donation funded. Here's another one of our important programs for the year that doesn't look very glamorous, but it's extremely important. If you look towards the back there, that big concrete structure, that is our water reservoir for town. It used to be protected only by a couple of padlocks. And I, I won't tell you what when I was a kid, we used to do with water protected only by a couple of padlocks. And so we worked really hard with the state of Nebraska to get a ten thousand dollar water security grant to improve security around our reservoir so that it would be protected from young enterprising, young children like me. And so what we were able to do is this fence that you can see here provides one level of protection. There are also additional levels of protection, including alarms and cameras and other things we don't particularly want to advertise, but that, that provide additional levels of protection for our water reservoir here in town. And so we're, we're quite proud of this, even though it may not look exciting to the public. We're really proud of it because, one, it protects our water supply. Two, it brought income to town. We purchased as many of these supplies locally as we could. About over seven thousand dollars was spent right here in Crofton. And in addition to that, we were able to purchase a generator, a small generator off of this grant that the city will now be able to utilize in cases of emergency. Another real important event that the city participated in were the cleanup days. The first one was delayed because of weather. The second one was not. But St. Rose actually had their cleanup day the first day. So we actually got to kind of do two cleanup days. The school has been an amazing partner this year with the city. I think they've participated in probably almost, almost every event, if not every single event that we've had. And the cleanup day really was primarily planned and carried out by them. But they, one of the neat things that we were able to do with this day is we were able to leverage some of the labor from this day into a grant opportunity. And the volunteers were willing to allow us to pledge their time towards the grant. And we were able to get that money and pledge it towards the perennial garden. So we were really grateful for that synergy of everybody coming together for the next project, which is the perennial garden and camping pads that are coming into the North Park area. Last, late last year, Country Pride approached us about the possibility of doing the land swap to get their propane tanks out of North Park. In today's day and age, they would never allow them to put those in the North Park now because of the safety hazard. But getting them out of North Park proved to be a bit of a, a challenge. And so we worked with them and some local residents to swap land and make it possible for them to remove the tanks out of the park into a safer place and then remediate the land so that that land now can be utilized for recreational purposes. There, because of the late winter, there were, there was kind of a slow start with getting them moved. But Country Pride graciously donated one thousand dollars to the perennial garden fund. And then they were able to get one of their partners, Lando Lakes, to also donate a thousand dollars to the perennial park fund. And so now our grants have been matched. And so now we will be able to do twice as much work. So we're very, very excited. We expect that we're going to be able to complete this project later, early in the fall. It's one of the difficulties, if you look down, you'll see that, that picture on the bottom left is what the land looks like now. Because of all the rain, the land is really soggy. And so Luke, or Larry has had a difficult time getting that land fully leveled. And once that land is fully leveled, we'll be able to put the garden in and then put the camping pads in to match. But we're very, very excited about finalizing the project. It'll just take some time. Okay, and I've kind of saved some of the best, our favorite, favorite events to last. And this is one where, and I don't think our, our race leaders are here. We have Dolores with us. But just recently, just within the last couple of weeks, actually, we did our first ever Crofton's Dam Race. And this was kind of spearheaded by our Economic Development Committee. Johnny Ostmeier and McReif and Raf were the, um, the race chairman. And then you'll see up there, that's kind of our race committee up there in the left-hand corner. They, Johnny had the idea, our Economic Development Committee was talking about ways that they could build economic development in Crofton. And Johnny really wanted to try to connect Crofton to the lake as much as possible. And so he came up with the idea of having a triathlon. And the aim this year was just to introduce the idea of the race and come up with twenty participants and try to kind of develop the idea of having tourism and help bring, you know, businesses to town. We didn't know quite what to expect. The event eventually hosted, I believe, over sixty participants. We sold over a hundred and fifty-five mils. We only served a hundred and twenty-two because some of them just wanted to, couldn't wait, had to get their beer down at Weeble Houses, which we're happy to, we were happy for that, too. And we reached over one million people through media outreach efforts. And I have kind of the detailed numbers on that. When I first saw that, I thought, "That can't be true. That's got to be an exaggeration." But I've seen the math and it's, and it's actually true. We reached sixty-six thousand people through the Channel Nine spot alone. And so we are really grateful for all the efforts that were done. And we've just, there've been some great stories from people who came into town and loved Crofton and just really wanted to stay. So it have come back to shop at the thrift store, do other things. So we're really, really excited about this event and where it can lead in the future. And then our last event, let me see if I can make this work. This event just occurred over the weekend. And this is the Crofton Pool Party. And this was, um, this event was sponsored by the North Park Committee. And if you look to the right, you can see pictures of the pool party. And I didn't know how many people would come to this and I was a little nervous. And then there was just a great crowd. And they actually raised over two thousand dollars this, at this night. And this is, what you're looking at on the left is an artist's rendition of, "It's the Dream of What a New Crofton Pool Could Possibly Look Like." It's a dream right now. It's not a promise, but we have high hopes. The Crofton Pool Renovation Fund right now is sitting at almost fifteen thousand dollars. And that's from one year's worth of fundraising efforts. If the committee raises fifty thousand dollars, we can apply for a grant with Nebraska Parks and Rec. And so I think that's the, that's probably the primary goal right now, is to try to apply for that grant. And hopefully, if we can apply for that grant, we can, we can partner or try to attract them to help us build a project like this. I know that, you know, I hear the question, "Okay, why, why do we want to have dreams like this?" And I actually kind of wrote down my answer because I wanted to make sure I said it right. And everybody has a different answer, but this is my answer. If we're going to have any sort of legacy to leave to our children, if we're going to build a tax base that can replace our aging infrastructure, if we're going to attract the sorts of families that are going to build the sorts of homes that Councilman Lawhead protects for Sharon Street, then these are the sort of dreams that we will need to have. And so I just kind of want to leave that with you, that, that we need to have big dreams if we're going to be able to have the community that's going to be able to sustain long-term longevity. I'm going to just kind of go into the next piece, if that's okay, Mayor, since, um, go into the economic development piece. A year ago, Mink, this council incorporated two entities. One of those entities was the thrift store. And in that year, and you incorporated the entities and you decided, you had to decide if you were going to run them yourselves or if you were going to send them off on their own. And the first part of this was kind of the things you've decided to do on your own. And I think you've done a pretty amazing job. But I think you've also made a pretty, some good decisions on the things you sent off on their own. And I asked the thrift store for a little bit of information about them as well. Since opening, more than fifteen thousand dollars has been given back to the community. Some of that has come back to the city, but most of it has gone to members of the community directly. In addition, it's been bringing visitors from all over to come to Crofton. The furthest away has come from Australia. And locally, some of the best repeat customers come from Wynott, Yankton, Hardington, and Bloonfeld. It was fun, just anecdotally, to be in there the day of the race because there were people in there just from all over. And I know there was one lady that I was introduced to who had never been to Crofton before, never seen Crofton before, and was like, "I'm going to bring all my stuff to the thrift store now." And I walked into the thrift store a little bit later and she was, she had a bag. They had a five-dollar sale and she was running around stuffing stuff in her bag. So, and that was so exciting to see somebody who was brand new to Crofton already filling it home here. I thought that was really exciting. The other, the other entity that you all set out on their own about the same time in January... in January, January 11th, 2017, actually, I looked up the date, was the Crofton Historical Center. And some members are here tonight to kind of give you an update on them, and they, and so I'm going to just turn it over to them so that they can, can introduce themselves. They are, they are here tonight to give you a presentation on what their progress is, where they're going, and they're also requesting an SDL liquor license. And I just want to give you a heads up on that, because somebody asked me, is this a long-term liquor license? This is just a one-time event license. This is not a retail liquor license.
So, we are the DeShazers, for anybody that doesn't know us, Juliette DeShazer. We live out by the lake, not in town here, but we have business in town here, construction business shop and our museum is in town here, so we, and our kids are here. So we spend a lot of time in Crofton hanging out. So, we wanted to come as representatives of the Crofton Historical Center to give you guys the update. Things were, I guess, when we originally started the center, there was talk before the Q125, and there was talk of us getting that building and maybe doing some kind of a soda shop or something there, but through the building not being sold during that time and everything, things kind of got delayed. But things picked up again this past December when we did purchase the building next door to our current business, the Loser Park Play Museum, which was the formerly Fritz's Bar and across the front of it, which we're kind of referring to it as the Schwartz Building. So, we, if you can go to the next slide. So at that time, the group of people who had gone through the process to form this center and become, you know, registered as the nonprofit entity, being the Crofton Historical Center, you should be able to just click. So, and I can talk a little bit before this pops up here, but what, what also started back before the Q125 was requests from customers. If anybody has, I know several of you have been to the museum before, seen kind of the setup and the displays that go on there. And when the Q125 was gearing up, and this was a year ahead of time, and people were coming and saying, wow, this is, this is actually a museum. You know, we've got Crofton memorabilia. Would you consider making an area within your museum to display historical Crofton memorabilia? And we said, that would be a fantastic idea. You know, but obviously, we were helping out with other things with the Q125, and not to mention his collection addiction. We ran out of space, and so we were kind of, we still have these things, but we had no more room to kind of do that. So, our next natural thing, you know, there was this beautiful historic building next door to us, and we had had our thoughts around, could we swing this or could we not? But that kind of started this and put fuel behind an idea of making not just maybe a wall display in our current museum, but actually dedicating a space that would become what we would call the Crofton Historical Center. And it would, you know, it would display Crofton history in a museum fashion. So, we, we just, you know, we feel passionate about preserving history, apparently. He's very passionate about preserving history, lots of it. So, and anyway, so we wanted to do this and then try and kind of archive Crofton's history. So, the historical center itself, the way that it was designed in our mind and worked out with the group of people that came together to form this, was not ever to generate money. It's not, so that's why it's registered as a nonprofit, it's a public service category, nonprofit entity that, you know, is never, it's, it's not a profit generating thing for the individuals involved in it. It's just another entity, sort of like, you know, the community club is an entity, but doesn't have a home or property. So, if you can, so, if you want to hit the next slide, check it. So the vision that we had at that time was to create a new attraction that would act as a draw for tourism in Crofton and have this history displayed in a museum fashion, and also serve as kind of a conference or meeting space with up-to-date technology. So, you know, currently, the museum itself does draw tourism to Crofton, and if we can put that same creativity and vision into place with Crofton-based history, we do feel that that will be a draw as well. Along with, you have no idea how many people come to our place that just say, oh, wow, we heard about this Main Street treasures, and now there's a museum here? And, you know, there's just a lot of this, you know, back and forth reciprocation going along Main Street that's been really exciting. So, and, and we do kind of think that Crofton does need a space, a small, you know, intimate space to, to hold meetings when they need to. We've had like the fire safety meetings with the, the folks out from the lake and things like that, where, where presentations can be put up. Right now, you know, I mean, we only, other than this auditorium, you know, there's really nowhere to gather and meet within Crofton. And so, you know, like for the Q125, they met at the museum a lot of times, and we were happy to be able to do that, and we're part of a lot of the work going on with that. So it made sense that we were going to be at the meetings anyway, and we could house them there. So, same kind of thing, but, you know, more of a actual setup with a smart screen and, you know, Wi-Fi, things like that. So, that, that's the last piece of the vision, so. So, what was our plan to create the Crofton Historical Center? First was to purchase a space that would house the Crofton Historical Center, which we were able to finally solidify that deal in December of last year. The formation of the nonprofit entity, actually, I'm just going to back up just a little bit as far as the buying the building. I mentioned it a little bit before, but it was the formerly Fritz's Bar, and we came to find out from meetings with the Schwartz family, actually, shortly after we bought the building, that there's a lot of history here, and that building itself is going to be 100 years old this year. So up on the, what do you call it? Stamp on the building?
The corso de haja, it's dated 1918.
Is dated, dated 1918. So, it's, we just, we're in love with the building, and we think that there could be a lot of, of good things. To us, we think it makes sense to have the historical center in one of the oldest buildings of the city, Crofton. So, you know, at some point in time, we would maybe even request that, Mary Strong, we could dedicate it as some kind of a historic site within the city. That would be kind of a fun designation.
We could probably do that.
So, and then the formation of the nonprofit. So, you know, we did partner with the city to bring this part of the strategic plan, you know, for more economic development, to bring this new attraction, new draw to Crofton. We weren't necessarily looking for another committee to be a part of, but we're happy to do it nonetheless, and we're excited about it personally, so. And then as far as construction goes, we've been fortunate enough that the guys involved with the nonprofit are construction guys, and so they've been investing and donating a lot of their time and resources to a lot of the demolition and things that have been done. We've kind of completed phase one of our project, which was to get the main entrance into the Schwartz Building renovated, and now we are to the point where we want to actually start renovating and doing things for the actual historic segment, and start making that dream come real, be real within the next six, eight months. So, of course, with that, there's always funding, there's, you know, with any project, there's always costs, and even though we're passionate about it, we don't have unlimited resources to throw at it. So we're not actually asking the city for any money, but what we are asking for is just general support of the efforts to bring this historic center to Crofton and make it a reality. And as part of that, we want to start doing some fundraising on our own as a private entity. And our first official event is going to be in Oktoberfest. We're a very German-influenced community, and, well, festivals are fun. So, we want to have our first official event, with all the proceeds going towards this nonprofit, you know, books and for the purpose of developing and constructing this historic center. We would like to, at that point in time, when hopefully we gather a lot of people from the community, unveil the project, unveil what our vision is for the project and how things would be laid out. We want to cook and serve some German food and German beer, and we've hired a band from Oha, got them earmarked to come up and play for us and hook the music in the evening. And so in order to have that first fundraiser, we do need to have this special designated license, the SDL, which Nebraska allows not only retail liquor license holders, but also nonprofit organizations to obtain any license for that. So, that's really kind of what we're here for. We wanted to give you guys an update, let you know that we're still passionate, and we still intend to, you know, make this happen, and, you know, it's, I think it's just something causal for Crofton. Obviously, we, we do need one thing, and that's just your general support for our efforts. Are there any questions?
I just want to say, I think it's a, it's a great undertaking, what you guys are doing here, as far as the city. I mean, that's the bottom line. You're creating economic development plus tourism, and you're bringing people into this community, and that's, I guess, that's what it's all about. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Over the years, I've become very surprised when I opened a museum, I didn't necessarily think of the economic development as a draw. But, you know, today, I look back at how many people come to town, hey, we heard there was a museum, they come to the museum, gets no charge, and, you know, sometimes they leave a free donation or whatever, but every one of them walks down the street and goes to the walls or whatever, and then we get, now we get regular bus tours that come through all the time. You know, we charge a few bucks for the walk through the museum and getting tours, and it's a natural thing to flow into the Crofton side of everything, and the historical center, because we, over these past three, four years, I have boxes of stuff that people have just dropped off, and it's going to be really kind of exciting to display all these Crofton memorabilia, it's a lot of advertising, ad infinitus, rulers, platters, dishes, and say, meat markets, or whoever was in town at the time.
Doc Carlson called us and said, hey, we got some cases, you know, we have cases in the basement of the door, Dee had all her things in, and, you know, we, so, he gave those to us, and we're just excited to start putting some of that stuff together. It'll turn out neat, because this guy's got more creativity and pinky toe than I have in my body, but, you know, he, he has a lot of vision, and he, you know, I've never seen anything he's, you know, put together that wasn't pretty, pretty special.
I think it'll be a fun, a fun project for the museum at all times. It'll make some talk, it'll be nice at all times, a great space, I think, to be.
Yeah, at this time, I would, I would entertain a motion to pass the SDL liquor license for the Crofton Historical Center for the Oktoberfest grand opening. So, I used to work up there at that place. When I started out a career working with the great Polly Johnson.
Oh, wait a second, is that, is that like a special, is that a special license under your name, or do you have to go under somebody else?
No, it's under the Crofton Historical Center. Because that's where the proceeds would go to, yes.
And I, I just wasn't.
Yes. That is a nonprofit that's registered with this date, and should I?
Yeah, that's not a problem, just.
Right, so, yeah, that's, that was the intent, is this will be the beginning of our fundraising for.
Will you be applying for a full liquor license?
Under the Loser Park Poli Museum and Catering, yes, we do intend to be applying for a full-time liquor license, but that would not be the Crofton Historical Center having that liquor license.
Gotcha, gotcha.
The basement of that building is here as it used to be?
We're going to put you down.
I don't think it's here, you stop up and see it sometime. We've gotten that front place, that first part done, it's, it's lightened up a little bit in there, it's not quite as dark.
I'm going to, I'll back up to one thing for the Crofton Historical Designation, the historical site. I'm also going to move towards the state, and the state recognizes as a historical site, there's a bit of paperwork and all of that, but with luck down the road, the state will also honor the historical site for our town, but the city has to do that first before it moves to the state. So that's, this is the first step to the state recognizing as a historical site.
It's a really fabulous building, we're doing it wherever we can.
Over time, I think it'll work out.
What, what history is there, so.
I'll second.
Motion by, count on the second by law head to pass the SDL liquor license for the Crofton Historical Center. Do we have a date on that?
Um, yes, September 29.
September 29.
Which will be the day after homecoming.
Homecoming.
So.
It's due in an Oktoberfest.
Hillman?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lawhead?
Yes.
Mink?
Yes.
All right, very good, thank you.
The planning and zoning committee, we did not meet in July, that's a month that we like to see as possible. So far this year, I have had 26 applications for zoning permits come across my desk, and I think 24 or 25 of them have been processed, and still waiting on a couple utility sign-offs, which is up from last year slightly, so that's good. Just want to continue to remind people that permits are required, even for replacement. There's been some confusion on that, so additions, new construction, replacement, get your permit, and that way the utility companies will sign off on it, and we will sign off on it, and everybody will be happy, so.
No, thank you, Anna. North Park committee?
I'm included, there is D.
Moving on, unfinished business. DEQ wastewater compliance?
Now that we have the assessments done, we will start moving into the DEQ project, but we just finished assessments, so we haven't dug into that yet. So you'll probably be seeing that in September. So there's nothing, I, I just, I just received some more information on that, but I haven't been able to do anything with it yet.
Sharon Street Special Assessments update?
If you look at your, the report, you'll see that each property has now been set the amortization schedule. We do have the notice of assessment of lean has been prepared. I don't think the council actually has to approve the lean, because that was done.
I don't think the council actually has to approve the lien because that was done with the assessment, but the paperwork is here for the mayor to sign tonight. And so the council members are welcome to look at it. But it's, it's an administrative task that will be done now that the assessments are completed and have been approved by the council.
City real estate purchase, sale consideration?
We did today receive payment for the fitness center. So once that payment goes through, we will finalize the deed and transfer. Councilman Hillman was appointed some time back to be the financial advisor to the city. He, and I meant to touch base with him again and ask him about this, but ways back, he recommended that we possibly allot monies that come in on sales like this in accordance with the sales tax revenue. So, we as staff feel like that's a good idea. And so what we would recommend to council is that those monies be earmarked in accordance with the sales tax revenue. So 60% to infrastructure, 20% to parks, 20% to economic development. But we're, we would ask you for your input on that, the monies for the fitness center.
Just add one second.
Yeah, we agree with, we think that's a good logic to have.
I, I agree with that. Do you have a form of motion?
I think it would be wise to have it in the form of a motion. And I apologize, I should have spoke with Councilman Hillman again before the meeting.
I recall when you talked about it.
I don't mean to put him on the spot, but if you want to put it, I'd like to have it in the form of a motion since you're spending money or allocating money. You're not spending it, but you're allocating it.
You notice how that motion gets considered?
Sure. So it would be a motion to earmark the proceeds from the fitness center sale in accordance with, and it doesn't even have to be sales tax revenue, but it would be 60% infrastructure, 20% economic development, 20% parks and recreation.
Okay, that's how it's stated. I need a motion.
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Motion by Allen, second by Mink. To have the proceeds of the Crofton Fitness Center go 60% infrastructure, 20% economic development, and 20% parks and recreation. Consulman Allen?
Yes.
Lawhead?
Yes.
Mink?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Mayor Strong? 2018, 2019 budget?
Essentially, that presentation was the presentation I gave at the beginning. It's just teeing you up and preparing you for the workshop meeting that we'll have next week.
Would you stake the date on that, please, just to refresh the consulents?
Sure. I believe it's 22nd, so it's actually, I think, two weeks.
Is it a Wednesday because we talked earlier about moving that off of Wednesday for some reason, Wednesday, 25th or something?
It's on my calendar for August 22nd. I do believe we had that conversation, but I believe some of the council people felt that Wednesday worked better with their schedules.
Okay. It is the 22nd, 6:30? Old business liquor licenses, private fundraiser?
There's a private benefit. We didn't put the name of the individual on here because we did not know if that was something they wanted to make public at this time. But it is, it is a private benefit that will be in the auditorium on September 8.
Liquor license?
I believe it's being catered by the American Legion.
Motion to have effect, please. September 8, 2018 benefit fundraiser at Crofton Auditorium.
So move.
Second?
I'll say.
Motion by Hillman, second by Lawhead to approve liquor license for September 8, 2018 benefit fundraiser at Crofton Auditorium. Consulman Lawhead?
Yes.
Mink?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
Yes.
Recreation programs?
There's no new business there at this time.
Who will be closed next Saturday? Is that correct?
That's the official closing date, but typically the day that the Knox County Fair opens, the poll opens, nobody shows up, and then they close. So that will be tomorrow. So tomorrow is probably the date that it will close.
Employee benefits, health insurance, personnel, contractor matters?
That'll be in executive session.
We are going into executive session.
Yes.
City employee job position postings?
Executive session.
Utility payments?
Executive session.
Annexations, north side acres?
This is, we need to, planning and zoning needs to consider this first.
Okay. Ordinances and resolutions?
New business.
New business, either not public power or potential easements?
This will, this needs to go to planning and zoning first.
Okay. Crofton Housing Authority Tax Exempt Status Letter?
If you look in your packet, there is a letter. We received a call from the county requesting that the city basically take a position on the tax exempt status on the housing authority. There are two letters. One is for the fire department, but it hasn't been adjourned, so that will be on a different meeting. But you're just looking at the Crofton Housing Authority right now. Essentially, the housing authority produced the General Certificate and Cooperation Authority Agreement that you approved in 1976. I know all of you were here and you remember that well. But in 1976, when you approved that agreement, you essentially excused them from paying taxes. You did require them to pay what's called in lieu of taxes, but if they didn't pay in lieu of taxes, there was no penalty. So essentially, you excused them from paying both. So this letter, I basically wrote it saying, "Yes, we agree with you that you don't have to pay either." So you don't really have to approve it because you already approved the original agreement, but I'm giving it to you in case you disagree with our reading of the agreement. But essentially, they haven't paid taxes and the county just wants to make sure that we're okay with that. And...
Is that property patent?
And technically, if you look at, and I included the agreement behind the letter, if you look, there's an underlined section and it says, well, actually, item D, upon failure of the local authority to make any payment in lieu of taxes, no lien against any project or assets of the local authority shall attach, nor shall any interest or penalties accrue or attach on account thereof. So it basically says they're excused from paying taxes.
What would be in lieu of?
In lieu of taxes is a payment that they would pay to the county directly and the county distributes it indirectly. So basically, it's property taxes they pay to the county and the county pays it to everybody, so they skip the state level. So it's, it's, it's still property taxes, but they skip paying it to the state.
Federal government. Why would they pay the federal state because they're a federal state entity? Because it's not county property? No, it wasn't county property. We get it, it's a state and federal.
They're nonprofit, are they not? Basically, they, you know, they collect from, they collect from the tenants based on their income and generally speaking, the income is real significant.
Subsidized by...
Yes, subsidized that way. Not unlike a lot of other situations like that where it was based on income, so many other things. Wouldn't have a lot of money. Perhaps some of them, they don't collect anything, they have their assets. You say, I know people have been, they have been getting social security. They can only take an active percent of that social security before their housing.
Right, but it would be the housing development that would...
They have expenses to keep up like their infrastructure, the tight rocks, the water.
Well, a lot of the rent would be liable to that.
Okay. On the file, that's all, that's all we're on the way to do. All right. We'll be on then, for the claims.
If you look at the claims this month, there are a few extra things. There's dirt, gravel. There is a little bit of money that was spent to Van's Greenhouse. That's because, that's money spent for the perennial garden because of a grant. We had to spend the money for the grant. So that's not money that the city's paying. That's money that the city's paying and we're going to be reimbursed from the grant and we had to get it purchased. Any other questions? There is one bill that came in from Most Hodson that were, that came in late that Larry's still reviewing. So it's this pending review of invoices. That's, you're approving it.
Contingent on review? Motion to pay bills?
We have two, we have so many, we have to prepare bills.
Consulman Lawhead has what the shared corporation is?
Those are janitorial supplies.
I see those often in school.
Motion by Allen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Allen to pay in the claims, invoices. Consulman Mink?
Yes.
Hillman?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lawhead?
Yes.
Mayor Strong?
She, mom came and got her.
Meeting is the annual budget workshop set for August 22nd, 2019 at 6:30 PM. So at this time for the executive session, for the purposes that are within the interest of the public and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of an individual, evaluation of job performance of a person when necessary to prevent needless injury to the reputation of a person if such person has not requested a public meeting regarding ongoing negotiations and for other reasons detailed in Nebraska Revictim Statutes 84-1410. So at this time at 7... Go ahead.
Items to be discussed are the two employment items listed on the agenda, the utility items. Is there any...
Okay, motion going to executive session at 7:38.
I'll make that one.
I'll say. Motion by Allen, second by Hillman, going to executive session at 7:38. Consulman Hillman?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Lawhead?
Yes.
Mink?
Yes.